We call the next meeting to order. I do have a forum present.
Mayor, Council, we have three presentations for you tonight. So we're going to move through those fairly rapidly. We're going to start with Judge Holman, and he's going to give you his annual court survey update.
I didn't want to give you copy of this. We did this the last two, the last week in November and the first week in December. The results are pretty much what we hoped for and what we were consistent, they were consistent with 2016. There's a little bit of a some rate up front, and then you can see that the two primary questions that we asked were the primary focus is access, do the people feel like they have access to the court? And then do they feel like they've been treated fairly? And you can see that 2016, the score was 88.7. This year is 87.8. It's about a, less than a one point percentage difference, but it went down a little bit, a couple areas. We have a little bit larger, we have a little, this year was, we had 201 responses as opposed to 146 last year. So it's a little bit different, a little bit larger, again over a two-week period rather than one week. The fairness section is about the same, so it wasn't that one point difference. And so statistically, it's not very significant, but just wanted you to be aware that that's kind of what we were doing. The next couple of pages kind of show you who the survey respondents were. And then I wanted to include, we gave them an opportunity to give some initial answers. The two that kind of jumped out at me, I put on the top of both pages. The judge was not very nice, and the judge was rude. I was right next to the judge, we appreciate the judge speaking Spanish. And so out of 201 survey responses, only had two that were not very happy. One was an ordinance violation. So we, I don't expect those people to be really happy with me, but I just wanted you to be aware of how the court's doing. I think the public perceives it as being pretty fair and pretty accessible. We try to keep it that way. We're a little bit higher than the industry standard, which is about 85 to 86 percent. Some courts are lower, some courts are not too much higher, but, so we're in the top range. So, any questions? That's all I got.
So Richard Lukey is up next. He's going to go over a couple of changes we've had on the I-35 quarter overlay recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Y'all probably recall back in November, we, at a work session, we went over the alternative standards associated with the overlay district in detail. And there were some concerns expressed on some of the alternative standards and the range of authority for the more significant items. So after that, with some feedback from some of our council members, we looked at two of the areas that have the biggest impact on redevelopment, and that includes exterior building materials and landscape standards. Those are the most visual impacts that we have with any type of development. Also realizing that any deviation from those two standards is most noticeable when you get to about the 25% range. So therefore, we made some amendments to those two areas and propose these three, kind of, this kind of three-way tier of approval authority. Staff would remain at zero to 10. The overlay district board would have authority on a deviation between 11 and 25 percent. Then anything over 25 percent would have to come to council. And then the following slides just kind of show what those, what those look like. And I won't go over each and every one of them, but I will use one example, like the tree spacing requirement. Trees are required to be 30 feet on average. So with a staff approval, staff could approve up to about, an average of 33 feet. And then anything greater than that, between 33 and 38, would have to be approved by the overlay district board. And then anything over 38 feet on average would be triggered going to city council. And with that, like I said, I won't go over all of these, but that example kind of applies to all of the rest. So we just wanted to bring that change before you and kind of get the thumbs up to continue moving forward. So if there's not any other questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions?
So if there are no other questions, then at the next meeting, we'll bring the overlay district back to the city council for consideration of approval.
Thank you.
Thanks, staff, for taking the time to work with me on that. I know I was one of the first ones to have that question, so you did a nice job.
So I'm stating corrected, we do have to have a public meeting, so we're going to do that before we bring it back to you. So that would throw it coming back to council, Nick.
Hopefully about two months. We will have to have a stakeholders meeting. We would like to have basically an open house with all the impacted up to orders along I-35. And then we would like to have another meeting with the engineers, developers, people who are working with ordinance and business, so that would be meetings before we actually take it to the planning of the project, which would be a public hearing. And then, of course, back to the city council. So I would give it about two months.
Questions? Okay, so our third presentation for the evening is water conservation rebate program. It's something we've talked to the council about in the past. We've talked about it primarily during the budget process. So now we've actually been able to spend some staff time fleshing out that program, and we wanted to walk through some elements of the program with you today. Mindy's going to take you through it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like Donna mentioned, we'll be walking through some really kind of broad level information about the potential water conservation rebate program. So why is this important for us as a community? Well, it's in alignment with our 2025 plan, specifically with big move number nine, sustainability. And underneath sustainability, goal number three calls out improving energy and water efficiency in existing and new public and private developments. So this would definitely fall into that category. Our utilities department has a water conservation plan for the city of Louisville, and within their water conservation plan, they also call out some strategies that identify ways that we as a community can control our water consumption. And that includes incentive programs like the one that's being proposed for the rebates for our residents. There's some additional benefits to adapting these behaviors, and residents are learning to do more with less. There's some cost savings there, and it can have some long-term benefits that they'll be able to recognize in times of drought where there's a higher demand on water supply. And then again, those cost savings on their monthly utility bills. And the EPA estimates that the average household is going to spend about $500 per year on water and sewer, and this is allowing a savings that could be up to $170 per year, depending on which options they select for their water conservation improvements. So we looked at some benchmarking with some of the metroplex cities that we typically measure ourselves against, and we looked at, do they have a rebate program? And if so, what does it look like for their community? Allen is at the top of the list. They're the most robust program in the area. They're kind of the gold standard for a water conservation rebate program. They offer many different options. They've done it for about 10 to 15 years now, very successfully in their community, so they offer a good standard to go by. And then you'll see with the list here, the different alternatives that the different communities have decided to adopt. We've looked at what they did, what works for them, what we feel like might work for us, and we've kind of picked and choose, chosen the different alternatives that we feel like would work best in Louisville. So how does this work specifically? So residents will get a form of a credit on their water bill back after they've made a purchase of an approved item. There's a menu of items that we'll get to in just a moment that they can select from for those credits. And then they have a maximum of $375 within a calendar or fiscal year that they can get towards this program. So they can select from the menu however they like, but once they hit that $375 threshold at that address, that's going to max them out. And then there's certain limitations that apply with those applications. For certain items, there might be, for instance, like a low-flow toilet. That's only going to be houses that were built prior to a certain year. After that certain year, the toilets that were installed will be low-flow enough that they would not be eligible for switching out under this rebate program. So depending on what the item is, there's going to be particular criteria that the resident would have to meet in order to have that purchase qualified. And then they also must be in good standing in terms of their utility bill. They can't be behind on their payments. And then they must agree to keep that equipment in place as long as they are owning that property here in Louisville. So the application process, how that works, we have the application that will be available online. Residents will fill it out, and they can choose to submit that either through mail or through email. They'll submit their proof of purchase with that as well. And there's certain items that must be pre-qualified prior to purchase because we don't want someone to spend money on something and then find out that it doesn't meet the criteria that we're looking for in order for it to be eligible for a rebate. And that's clearly stated on the application, so the resident would know, I might want to double-check to make sure that this is an eligible item. The website will have guidance that's developed from EPA that shows exactly how you best select what works for you, how to go about installing, working with a plumber if necessary, working with a licensed irrigator if necessary. And then will also serve as a resource as well, if necessary, for those residents. And then the rebate credit comes once they actually are going to submit that proof of installation, the receipts. In some cases, we may need to go out and do a visual and have an inspection that shows something a little bit more in-depth, depending on the option that they select. And then that resident, once that's approved, will get that rebate back in the form of a credit on their water bill. So these are the options that we are proposing be available for Louisville residents. We have washing machines, tier one, two, and three. That's a ranking that is designated by the EPA. It basically has to do with the level of energy efficiency and water efficiency, and also kind of the price range. Tier one is going to be your least expensive models. Tier three is your most expensive models, and you'll see that the rebate reflects that as well. You get less for a least expensive washing machine, more for a more expensive one. Rain barrels up to $25. Low-flow toilets, $50. Water shaving shower heads, up to 30. There's some that aren't even close to 30, so it would be the purchase price for that. Rain-in-free sensors for the irrigation system, so that it's shutting off in case of precipitation. And then the smart irrigation controllers. And then having someone who's a licensed irrigator can do that system inspection and making sure that the zones are running as they should, and the heads are aimed where they should be, and so forth. So these are the options that we are proposing based on what's worked well in other communities and what we feel like our residents would respond to. So how does this benefit our residents? Obviously, they're going to save some money over time. They'll have improved performance and results from their irrigation systems. They're working like they should be instead of watering your sidewalk or the street, or watering during a rain event. For instance, some of the savings that our residents might recognize, so we have our stormwater fee where a resident might be paying $48 annually, that's that $4 a month fee times 12. You have a low-flow toilet where we said a moment ago, that'll be a $50 credit back. So if someone elects to put a low-flow toilet in their home, they're offsetting some of the costs of that fee. It's not an apple-for-apple kind of thing, but it's a way that they can make a choice where they are seeing some benefits and some cost savings on their utility bill. And the good thing about this is that once they have that item in place, they'll continue to see those savings each year through their water savings on their bill through reduced water usage. So we're seeking to roll this program out in April in conjunction with Water Conservation Month, so that we can kind of get the biggest bang for the buck. There's a lot of promotions that'll be going on, on a national scale, to promote water conservation, so it's just a good alignment to already get that message out. Looking at social media, water bill, some public information through Color Palooza, the garden secrets classes, things that are already going on, where we can tap into those audiences that might be interested. And then also, most importantly, we're looking at tracking this data over time. Once people are choosing to participate, which savings are they seeing? How much difference in water consumption are we seeing from year one to year two and moving forward after that? So that we can see that there's an appreciable benefit for our residents. Any questions?
That's it?
Actually, I do have a question. So they have to purchase it when the rebates are, that they've already purchased that? Are they eligible for the rebate as well?
If they've already purchased it.
Purchase one of those.
If it's an eligible item that has the receipt, I would think that it would qualify. But they would have to have the original receipt, and it would have to be, meet the criteria for that particular individual item.
One issue to always consider, Council, so in order to operate our utility, you have to obviously have a certain amount of revenue. So this is a credit. So when I spoke to Clipper, he handles our rate analysis. His rule of thumb is for every $100,000 in credit, you're going to drive your rate up six tenths of one percent. So certainly, we want to encourage water conservation. That's a great thing. Maybe over time, that helps us not have to buy more water from Dallas and all those type of issues. But it will have some impact on your, on your rate establishment, so just keep that in mind. So that's why you see Mindy with a cap on how much we're going to receive.
Does that rebate, does that have to be funded out of water, or could it be funded out of general fund?
I don't think you'd want to fund a credit.
You're offsetting it in a way.
Yeah, yeah, with a property tax money. I would say you want to keep that over to the utility. Clipper, do you want to add anything?
No, I don't.
We had like seven minutes set aside for you.
That's right. Where's your full presentation?
Oh, I don't want to take some, any of these right down.
I think it's a positive program to encourage conservation, obviously in line with our 2020 plan. But always keep in mind, there is an impact on the rates.
And that was just water, 1.6. Obviously, if you get it across the board, you'd be about 0.3 for water, so we're.
Appreciate the announcements.
Continue.
That's three presentations.
Okay, let's move on down to the discussion of the agenda. Regular session, we'll start with the indication and. Followed by the question flag to myself, and proclamation, TJ.
I proclaim.
Okay. Now we're down to the consensus gentleman out of agenda, out of one, out of two, out of three, out of four. Last time we had about six of these pulled and talked about 12. Number five. And then number six.
Six, only to pull, very good. There is a reference to waste management funding.
On number six?
And Council, I am asking you to table this to April 16th meeting. We're having some change in personnel at the university, so we're talking through with the partners, who's going to actually have authority to sign this agreement now. So there are issues that we're working through. So I have another partner's meeting between now and April 16th, so I am asking you to table that to April 16th.
I'd suggest that you recommend that one of our staff have the ability to sign for them.
I think that'd be lovely.
So we're pulling out for two reasons.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we're down to regular hearings, number seven. Number eight.
So this is the ordinance that Claire spoke with you guys about a number of months ago. So as we started working more in-depth on the ordinance, once we had your support on the ordinance, we found that there was an ADA compliance issue. So you see some changes to this ordinance, so it is different than what we talked about originally. Do you have the chart? So we didn't want to end up with curb cuts all along, haphazardly along the block. And so we revised this. So now you have a valet service that would support all of the businesses within a block, basically. Under the ADA, every valet service, and you'll see a lot of them, started being very observant after we found this out, you have to have a path, obviously, accessible path to the restaurant, which, which drives a curb cut requirement. And so we revised it. You'll see a lot of valet services that don't have that, but it is a requirement of the ADA, and so we have revised this ordinance to reflect one single valet service that would support several businesses within that 360 feet distance, distance on the same block face.
Anyone have any questions on that? This is one of the milestones we looked at years ago.
Yes, sir.
If we had success in Old Town, would we start having parking problem? And the valet is just part of that.
Yeah, this started with requests from the J-2 Steakhouse. They're very interested in having a valet service. So when they open, hopefully in April, you'll see that valet service established.
April just said they're open in March.
You know Donna.
Is there any other reports we have for tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. We will reconvene at 7:00 in the main council chamber. At 7:00, we'll call tonight's meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. First item of business is the invocation by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones, followed by the pledges to the American Texas flags by myself.
Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and protected Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Ms. City Manager, we're here tonight to present to you all the winning logo design for Color Palooza 2018. This is the third year for the logo design contest, and this year we received more entries than ever before. All the entries were wonderful, and so after much debate and deliberation, the panel has selected this logo to be our winner. The designer is Marlene Rodriguez, and she is a freshman at Louisville-Harmon. And we're so thrilled with her design and to see it rolling out soon on all marketing for Color Palooza. Marlene is here tonight and wants to tell you all a little bit about her logo.
Hello, so I would like to mention.
Come up a little bit closer and pull the mic down. There you go.
I would like to mention my inspiration for the logo itself. So I, I would think, well, I think that the community itself, every day we're making new creations everywhere, like maybe we don't know some of those creations, but they're going to impact the world in a way that we don't even know. So that was my inspiration for this logo and for all the community of Louisville and spring.
Okay. Very nice. Thank you.
Thanks, Marlene. And we have a little gift for you, Marlene, tonight. We have the first piece of Color Palooza 2018 merchandise, a T-shirt with your logo on it.
Thank you.
We hope to all see you at the festival Saturday, April 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll have a proclamation presented by Councilman TJ Gilmore.
My name is Lauren Johnson and Julie, I find it messed up the last name, is it Clue? Cluevee, okay. Those E's on the end, you never know. So whereas the Parent Teacher Association has a mission to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children, and whereas PTA prides itself on being a powerful voice for all children, a relevant resource for families and communities, and a strong advocate for public education, and whereas membership in PTA is open to anyone who wants to be involved and make a difference for the education, health, and welfare of children and youth, and whereas PTA is the largest volunteer child advocacy organization in the nation, and whereas PTA has worked towards bettering the lives of every child in education, health, and safety since its founding in 1897, and.
Whereas.
There we go. The Louisville ISD Council of PTAs will recognize leaders and volunteers of the 60 local PTAs that serve schools in the 13 communities comprising Louisville ISD during the annual Founder's Day celebration to be held on February 22nd, 2018. Now, therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, council member of the city of Louisville, as well as the city council and Mayor Rudy Durham, on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim February 22nd, 2018 as PTA Day in Louisville, Texas, and applaud the PTAs in Louisville for their roles in engaging families and working on behalf of all students and families. Thank you so much, and I would appreciate it if you would say a couple of words, because I know you have plenty of things on your plate to talk about.
Thank y'all very much for this. As you know, Louisville comprises 13 municipalities, and that's a big undertaking to try to get everyone to declare it PTA Day. So y'all are our first, so thank you very much for being so quick with that. And we're excited to have PTA Day, to honor our founders of PTA and our leaders in our communities that help our children, and I appreciate it.
Do you have anything?
I just wanted to add that we're going to be having a banquet to celebrate our Founder's Day on PTA Day, 22nd of February, and we're going to have the proclamation on display there, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Mayor, have representatives from United Way present.
Come on up.
If you could all state your name, please.
Absolutely, I'm Gary Henderson, president and CEO of United Way of Denton County.
I'm Lyle Drescher, I'm chairman of the Board of Directors of United Way of Denton County.
And it's our honor tonight to present to you an award that our Board of Directors gave to you at our United Tribute Gala a few Saturday nights ago. 620 some odd people got to hear us brag about you, and we wanted to come in your presence and tell you how wonderful you are. Thank you to Councilman Gilmore for accepting the award on your behalf at United Tribute. So we told the folks in attendance that our next award is the Advancing the Common Good Award, and the winner is the city of Louisville. The city of Louisville advances the common good across Denton County in a number of impactful ways. In addition to delivering much-needed financial support to United Way of Denton County through their workplace campaign, the city of Louisville provides elected officials and senior administrators as appointees to our behavioral health leadership team and our homelessness leadership team. Mental illness and homelessness are two critical issues identified in our 2017 Community Needs Assessment. Louisville's partnership spans several decades, and we're honored to have them in the United Way of Denton County family. On behalf of our Board of Directors, our staff, and just. On behalf of our Board of Directors, our staff, and just countless people, over eighty thousand people, who receive help because of your leadership, we want to present this award to you and just tell you how much we value your partnership and appreciate your support. So congratulations.
Donna, you gotta go get that.
You guys should applaud. We already have a picture with Councilman Gilmore, Donna. This would be wonderful if we could have a picture with you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations. We appreciate you guys. Thank you, ma'am.
I just have to add, the United Way does such wonderful things for our community. It's really a pleasure for our employees to get involved and to help raise money for those incredible agencies represented by the United Way.
Okay. Thank you.
All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the City Secretary. May I have received no cards?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item six and table item six until City Council meeting on April 16th.
Second.
What? We can't vote on the tabling while TJ's on the dials.
Got to open it up first. So just pull six.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item six.
Second. We have a motion and a second. There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Now I can go.
Go ahead.
So move to table item six until City Council meeting on April 16th.
Second. Okay. Motion is second. There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Consideration of an ordinance amending section two dash four eight to amend the requirement for a licensed architect on the Old Town Design Review Committee. The proposed revisions eliminate the requirement that a licensed architect be a member of the OTDRC and instead add a requirement that the city manager hire an architectural firm with experience in historic design and preservation to advise the committee. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance. We have Claire Swan, Assistant City Manager, and Richard Ludke, Planning Director, both available to address any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. City Attorney.
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending chapter two, article three, section two dash four eight, Old Town Design Review Committee of the Louisville City Code by amending the requirement for a licensed architect providing a repealer severability and effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item eight. Consideration of an ordinance amending chapter nine point five and sections two dash two zero one and fifteen dash seven to adopt valet parking regulations and associated fees. This ordinance creates a valet parking licensing process, establishes fees, and adopts operating regulations to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, minimize traffic hazards, and protects surrounding uses. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance. Claire Swan, Assistant City Manager, and David Salmon, City Engineer, are both available to address any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Entertainer motion.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending chapter fifteen, Traffic and Vehicles of the Louisville City Code by adding section fifteen dash seven, which prohibits valet parking within the city limits except as otherwise provided in the code, amending chapter nine point five, Old Town Development, by adding article thirteen, which sets forth regulations regarding valet parking, and amending chapter two, section two dash two zero one, fee schedule, by adding several fees related to valet parking, providing a repealer severability penalty and effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Reports. We'll start with you, Nika.
Since United Way was here bragging on us, I just want to give a shout out to our employees this year. Our employee campaign through payroll deductions, our employees definitely live the Louisville way, and they serve through their donations. We raised over thirty-six thousand dollars that we were able to donate to the United Way this year. And a big thanks to Chief Jay, Assistant Chief Jay Powell. He was our committee chair this year.
Okay. Thanks to all the employees for that. Thank you. Russ.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind the council and the public, our next Coffee with the Cops is next Thursday, February 15th, seven to nine AM at the LHS Campus, Harmon Campus, that's located on FM 3040 at Duncan Lane. Hope to see everybody out.
Okay. Thank you. Is that still a success?
Sorry?
Is that still a success?
It still is. We get a different crowd of folks at each different place. The ones we do at the schools are particularly fun, because we have some parents show up.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Lake level.
Mayor, the lake's one point seven feet below the conservation pool level.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Nothing?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a report today. I know we have scheduled a workshop for April for our sustainability, but I wanted to jump the gun and brag upon our sustainability manager. We have just received commendation as a Soul Smart City. We are one of six in the state of Texas. And what that Soul Smart designation is basically a national designation for communities that have removed barriers and made it easier for solar customers to invest in solar energy. This is an initiative through the U.S. Department of Energy, and the program primarily focuses on the reduction of solar soft costs. Those are admin costs usually that are passed on for inspection costs, things like that, things that make it a barrier for people to enter into solar, getting solar in their homes. So this is really a great achievement. This is one of the first things we put Mindy on was to go through this rigorous process of applying for this. And also, we've already started receiving national publicity about this online, and so we wanted to make sure council knew before it got any further that you heard it from us first. The other thing that was recognized is that the city is a solar-ready city. That means that all new construction in the city of Louisville, after we adopted our 2015 residential code, has to have a spot on your roof that is solar-ready. So if someone wants to put solar there, it is loaded appropriately as well as there's a designated spot for that. There are not a lot of cities that are doing that, and that makes us even a bigger advocate for solar. So congratulations to the council for your administrative help in all the adoptions of these codes and to our staff who've gone through the rigorous process of getting this certification.
Okay. Eric.
Nothing, ma'am.
Nothing. TJ?
Mayor, I wanted to let folks know that our convention and Visitors Bureau is looking for help from residents on our city history project. We have items in the city that we don't necessarily know the provenance of, or maybe it's a picture, and we don't know who's in the picture or what timeframe. So all those little details, we're reaching out to the community to say, hey, maybe you guys can come out and help us lock down what this represents of our history. There are going to be three come-and-go public meetings to get that input, and of course, those will be Thursday, February 22nd, from four to seven PM at the Visitors Information Center, which is at 247 West Main. Tuesday, February 27th, ten to noon, at the Senior Activity Center, which is at 1950A South Valley Parkway. And Wednesday, March 7th, from seven to eight-thirty PM at Lane Chapel Church, which is 615 Hembry Street. And of course, if you can't make any of those, or you've got some history and you'd like to share that with the rest of the city, we have three history rooms that are available, and you can absolutely talk with our team. So just go to the city website, and in the search bar, type "city history," and it'll pull up the information that you need. That's all I have, Mayor.
City Manager?
No, sir.
Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Several things coming up to the MCL Grand. First of all, Louisville Lake Symphony will be presenting its winner of their annual Young Artist Competition in Concert on February 9th. That was won by a lady named Megan Lynn, a seventeen-year-old, who, I believe I'm correct, has already played Carnegie Hall twice and has a slew of awards. So I expect a very exciting concert. The overall theme is entitled Drum Roll, and again, that's on February 9th at the MCL Grand. Texas Tunes continues with Gina Chavez on February 10th, the very next night. And then the Black Box Concert Series features David Lee the night after that on the 11th. So three nights in a row, some great music at the MCL Grand. And then a week later, the first annual Elvis Remembered Concert will take place at the MCL Grand, and that's February 18th. Public events, we have a Garden Secrets class, Horticulture, What's Hot for 2018 on February 15th, presented by Keep Louisville Beautiful, Lula Rose Shopping Event on February 18th, Acoustic Jams Always Every Friday, and Waste Management will be conducting a public meeting regarding their expansion plans for the landfill, DFW landfill, on February 7th, and the public's invited. Art Exhibits, Martin Luther King Student Art has moved over to the MCL Grand, opened on January 20th, and that will continue through February the 10th. And 2017 Azalea Winners opens, opened on January 19th, and that continues through March 3rd. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, City Secretary, Officer, thank for your service to the community. And do we have an executive session?
No, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion to.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes. We are adjourned.